Good evening and welcome to the April 8th Town of Proctor Select Board Meeting. If you'd all please join us for the Pledge of Legions.
A pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is review and approve the agenda. A motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And review and approve the minutes of March 25th.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open public comment? We don't have any public with this and I don't think there's anyone on. Okay. Speed right along then tonight. Everyone's got had a choice or the bells are moving up and down the table. And second is Judy applied and received an additional $100,000 grant for South Street sidewalk. And you want to just go ahead and talk about the match?
Sure. They were concerned when the sidewalk, as we kind of progressed along the way, that it might go over and if we wanted to apply for an additional grant to help cover that. So we did. And we got $100,000 with a 20% match. So I'm not sure how much it will go over, if it'll go over that much, because the bid came under the expended amount. So we might need it, but if, at least if we do, we have grant money there for it and not just out of pocket, so.
That's great.
Yeah. Good job.
Can I just bring up one?
Yep.
Concerning that. You know, when I walk by Reynolds', you know, the sidewalk from Reynolds' is some three or four feet of dirt before it reaches South Street. And then when you get to Grove, it's probably six or seven feet dirt before it gets to South Street sidewalk. When we were here for the bid opening, I looked at the plans and I didn't see where, in the plans, where they were going to connect those, you know, are they going to connect those two sidewalks or will it be left the way it is, you know, that dirt?
I don't know. My guess would be it might be left that way, you know, without extending all the way down or something, you know? I mean, if it's just a small patch, they might put it in there, but right now I think they're just focusing on South Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's just not connected, like I say.
Right.
They're four to five feet.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We kind of had this discussion last meeting about dissolving the committees that no longer have an agenda item, so John Zee had mentioned, you know, it might be a good idea just to take action on that. So we used to have a lot of committees. We had VORAC, the Public Nuisance, Town Office. At one point, we had a Budget Committee, a Finance Committee. So just for finalization, a motion would be in order to dissolve all committees that no longer have agenda items. They have served the need and issues were resolved.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And to appoint five members to the Beaver Pond Committee, and I think Judy has the people that are interested.
The only ones that got back to me as far as having a continued interest were Tom and Pauline Hogan, Jim Moore, and Dale Christie. So I noticed in some of the emails he sent for like the meetings, he's included other people who I know are no longer even interested or on it. So I'll put it out there again on the website, and if one more person comes forward, then we'll just move to have them appointed as well.
Okay. So a motion would be in order to appoint Tom and Pauline Hogan, Jim Moore, Dale Christie to the Beaver Pond Committee for a two-year term.
I'll make that motion as you called it out.
All right. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? And I think just staying with a five-man or five-person committee makes it easier than you only need three people to have.
Quorum.
Yeah. A quorum.
Charlotte.
So, and that way, they're supposed to meet, I think, what, next week maybe?
Yeah, we're meeting on the 16th, 6:00 PM.
And so at that time, they can elect from their group who they want to chair, and then Judy can share that information with us at the, at a future meeting. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Dump date? Just informational, Judy?
Yeah, well, when we talked last time, I think we talked about having $15 for the visit.
Yeah.
And when I looked back on it, the last two times was $20. So I didn't know if you wanted to revisit it and do 20. And the only reason I brought it up is because a lot of people complained last time that they don't like it changing, they like it consistent so they remember, okay, it was $20 this last year, we've got to pay $20 this year.
Yeah. Well, 20 is probably easier, then you don't have to worry about change.
Exactly.
Yeah. So if you want.
Judy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to ask you, was it $20 the initial load?
No, the second load.
The second load was 20?
The first load is free. You just have to get a ticket downstairs.
Okay, right. Yeah, I did that, I think we did it once and I couldn't remember if it was.
Yeah, they have, they'll just write down your name, address, and then whatever number you are, and like, I think last time maybe they were blue tickets or something.
Ticket, and then the second was 20.
And then the second one had a cost to it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And so then you'll make up little wires for that. All right? And then did you just want to follow up about 2651 West Street?
Sure. I included in your packet the report from Alderson. He came down on the 29th to inspect the property and did a detailed inspection of it. And I talked to him after the fact, last Monday, I believe it was, and he said that the only asbestos that he found was in the windows. The glazing on the windows was the only thing that seemed to have asbestos. He said, so the cleanup, before the place can be demolished, it has to have, which is pretty much there anyway, those all have to be removed, the windows do. Plus, there's also an oil tank in the basement that has to be removed separately. And then once those are removed, then they can do a demolition and haul the stuff away. So, so that's, that's a big, it's kind of a big relief to know there's not a good majority of asbestos, because it's, that's wicked costly. So if we could find somebody just to remove the windows, the only thing is the windows are everywhere, he said.
Yeah.
They're in the yard, they're in the house, they're.
So do we have to haul everything offsite or stuff can be?
I think everything could be, other than the tank and the windows.
But you have to move everything to get the tank out and?
Yeah, yeah. And plus, I mean, the tank, at least, the basement is a big, like a walk-in, so somebody could probably go in there and dismantle it and drag it out from there.
Okay.
The thing is, there's a car there, there's a camper there.
Yeah.
So I think my next step is reaching out to them to say, we've done an asbestos report, here's what needs to be done, what's, what's your status, what are you looking at? Because if the town cleans it up, we're going to clean it up, pay for it, and then we're putting a lien on the property. So.
Okay. So what's the feeling of the board? Do we want to, how did Judy write a letter, sharing, you know, the report, and then put a timeframe on getting the property cleaned up? Otherwise, we're going to kind of live in limbo, I feel like, like we've done all this, so.
No, I think that's.
Yeah.
This is to the owners of the property?
Yes.
Yes.
And somebody's communicated with them?
So there's been ongoing, there's only one owner of the property. I think Missy is the owner.
Right.
So, yeah, so there was, there was conversation in the beginning about the asbestos. And the state told us, we had a, there was a report, looking for the reports, we did that bouncing back and forth for, I think, I don't know, seemed like a couple months.
Right, yeah.
There was no report. And so that's how we ended up with this person, he was the low bidder person, to go in and assess the property, to see what there is for asbestos. So now, having Judy write a report saying that, giving them a copy of this report, and that these are the things that need to be removed with respect to cleanup in a certain way, asbestos.
Right.
And the oil tank, and.
And that's their responsibility.
Well, so that, that's kind of the hamster on the wheel. Like, so it is their responsibility, and we've been, the board's been going round and round about this. So that's the question. Is there a timeframe? Like if we said, sent this to them and said, like, June 15th, they need to have it cleaned up, or have started and have it 50% cleaned up? If they don't, then the town is going to start and do that because it's a safety issue, it's a health issue, it's in violation of the zoning, because it's a property that had a fire in it. So there was a timeframe on that also. And let them know that if the town then starts that, that the town will then put a lien on the property for whatever monies we spend to do that.
Yeah, I think that's good. I mean, if they have the information and they would know easy enough to go ahead if the report would indicate a minimum amount.
Yeah.
We went through, so the proper channels really is not through me, it's through the health officer. So the health officer, which I was at the time, sent the letter. So we did follow all that. We gave them a deadline to get the asbestos report, they failed to do that, they failed, they started to clean it up, and then the state called and said, whoa, don't, you can't clean that up until we know there's no asbestos. So then that's when we started getting the state involved more, and then they said there's nothing they could do, it was all on us to do. So I think if we follow up with a letter saying, you know, we gave you this deadline, you didn't meet it, we have to get this property cleaned up, we got somebody in there, this is the status of it, if you're willing to pay to have it called away and clean it up, you must do so by.
Yeah. I think, I mean, we're like, you know, I think June 15th is a reasonable time. I mean, it is kind of still soft and muddy, but if you said, like, you know, even if they'd started and they were 50% into it.
Right.
By June 15th, I would be happy to see that kind of improvement.
At least the way you're describing it, you're giving them a step-by-step, and if you go through this, here's the alternative. So it's, they're not in the dark either way.
Yeah. So by June 15th, if they haven't done anything, then, you know, at that point, we can take action and, and do what we want to, you know?
This is the structure down by the castle that they burned on.
Maces.
Right, okay. Yeah, yeah.
And I'll reach out to Alderson too, just to say, because he, he would be, they would also be willing to remove it, take it away, haul it away. So they can handle all that piece of it. Who's that?
The, there's.
The ones who did the report, Alderson. So I, I'd kind of like to let him know that, so then let him know that, instead of just saying, go do it now, the reason we're delaying is because we're giving the owners.
An opportunity.
An opportunity to try to do it.
Yeah.
But it's really hard to get a hold of them, because no one knows where they are. They kind of live around their lot.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I've communicated mostly through email with them.
But, you know, that property isn't worth very much, and we've got to watch that part of it.
Yeah.
Be in a lien on there.
And always make it a dog park.
Yeah.
Well, the only, I mean, we have, if we did it, if, if the only alternative is for the town to clean it up, then we'd have to put a lien on it, and then we'd just tax sale it.
Yeah.
And some people might want to buy it, neighbors who don't want anything else.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So that might be an option.
Yeah. Because there's not, there's not a viable well, there's not a viable, yeah. So you're basically just buying that strip of property.
One of the gentlemen that has that sugaring.
Yeah.
Grew up in that house, back when we were in school.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like we're, if we, because if we tax sell it, we have to sell it for what we have in it, so we're not going to lose any money.
Right.
Yeah. So that's.
I think they're putting more stuff there.
I know, that's the thing. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why I think, kind of need to get a handle on it.
Okay.
Okay, great.
What did we get involved in Alderson's coming down?
Oh, the cost?
Yeah.
What did we what?
What was the cost for?
For Alderson's to come down and do this?
I think it was $1,495, about $1,495.
Yeah, the prices were on the first.
Right.
Handout, and he was the.
I think he was a little higher, but I think it's, they do such an extreme amount of testing. You know, like, it's not like they just go take a sample, and he was in there for a while, and he said he was kind of nervous.
Yeah.
Yeah. And he had done some, something else down in this area that came with.
With the church.
Yeah.
Community church.
Yeah. And once again, that money we can recompense too.
Yeah.
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 Okay. All right. Greenup Day. So we have bags, and the plan is, we have bags at the library, bags here at the town office, people can come and pick up. And then you just want people to leave them on their front lawn, or?
At this, yeah, the guys sit on the side of the road.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then that Monday, so Greenup Day is May 4th, may the 4th be with you. Then that Monday, the guys will go around and pick it up, but just on that Monday. It's not going to be a tour for the week to, to pick up. And it has to be, yeah, yeah, like the Christmas trees. And it has to be in greenup bags. Okay? All right. And the school will be out on Friday, the high school will be out on Friday doing greenup ahead of that, so. All right. Motion to move into the Board of Water Commissioners would be in order at 6:17.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Judy?
So the guys, I gave them a list of the top 20 delinquent accounts, and they've been going around checking for curb stops, so they reported back to me with a list of ones that they have curb stops that can be shut off, and then the ones that they can't find a curb stop right now, so they're going to dig into looking at those more. Once they went out, I've had four people contact me about setting up agreements.
Okay.
So Celia and I talked about it, and, because normally Celia would do this, and so if she wants me to do it, I'll do it, but what, our, our thought is, is we want there to be one agreement, certain money, money down, and then enough, enough to pay so that they're paid the delinquent amount by the end of the year.
Yeah.
If they enter into this agreement and they fall off the agreement, then we can shut the water off without a notice.
And it says that in the agreement?
Yeah, I've, I've got to check, because there's different ones.
Okay. I've never seen, I don't, I don't think I've ever seen an agreement, so.
Yeah, so, so I'm going to make sure I get as much information on there from people and tell them that you pay this, if you pay next month $200, and then the next month you don't pay, and the next month you don't pay, we're coming to shut the water off and we don't need to notify you.
Yeah.
So it's definitely made some people.
So when we say end of year now, I mean, we're in April, are we saying end of year? We're not saying end of year is June 30th?
No, no.
Okay.
Like April to eight, you know?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, calendar year.
Okay, and I think that at one point, that was kind of like, they took the delinquent amount, divided it in, 12 into it.
Yeah.
And then figured out, like, what, how much needed to be down, kind of taking out the months that the current water and wastewater were due?
Yeah, that's the way Michael did it.
Yeah.
That's not the way Celia did it.
Okay.
Celia just said, here's the amount you owe, you pay this month. So, because she said otherwise people get confused, am I paying it this month, am I not paying it month, what am I paying?
Okay, so just have them pay.
Just 12 months, yeah.
Okay.
Figure it out, so.
And then you have them put down how much? Is it like 30%? I mean, or?
I think it depends on how much they owe, so like, if I know they can't afford X over, you know, if they can afford $500 now, and then, you know, $100 every month, you know, something like that, so.
I just think it has to be a reasonable amount. I think some of the agreements that we saw prior on that list, if you're paying $25 and you owe $3,000.
Yeah, it's not going to get.
That's, that doesn't seem like a realistic.
Right, right.
You know?
I know.
Agreement to be in. It seems to me like you're just in the agreement, so.
Right. Yeah, and that's why we said, you know, year, you got to pay it, you know? Because otherwise, it hurts them, because they're just going to get more delinquent, and the cost is just going to go up higher and higher, then they're never going to be able to pay for that.
Yeah, with the interest, so, yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right. And about how many of those 20 do you think curb cuts, curb cuts, curb stops are not?
I think there were, well, another big problem is that, I think, three of them, the three biggest ones are tenant occupied.
Yeah.
So that becomes a problem.
Yeah.
Because we can't shut it off. We don't want the tenants to put it in their name, because then if they don't pay, we have no recourse.
Right.
So out of all of the other ones, there's probably, I think, I want to say maybe four tops.
Okay.
But they just couldn't locate exactly where the curb, they're still looking for, figure out where the curb stops are.
But we could tax sale the, for the water or wastewater?
Yeah, you can do that, yeah.
Because that seems to be with some of them, it's just habitual.
Oh, yeah. And they're, they're up high up there.
Yeah, and they're still getting rent.
Right.
So, okay.
And some are bank, one's a bank owner, so I don't get.
Yeah.
Why not, they're not moving on it or doing anything.
Oh, so maybe a call needs to be made there or something. That's surprising that they're.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we've got any more that are tied to one line.
I think there was some question about Newton Street, if some, a few, a couple houses were on one, and then there was one other one that they mentioned, and I'm trying to think of the location of that one.
Because I think we got, took care of the Gormbridge one.
Yeah, when they did that road there, yeah.
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 All right. So next meeting, we'll have a list of people that have made agreements, and people that didn't make agreements and have been.
Right.
Shut off. And then maybe also just, if we could have a list of those houses, if there's a problem or there's a problem with the curb stops.
Okay, yeah. Provide that for you guys.
Yeah. Just for informational, because then we have to decide what, how, if we're putting curb stops in, if we're.
Right.
Doing, you know? Okay. So the next part is creating, meeting, and we can do this a couple ways. We can meet as a committee, we can meet a couple people with Judy and look at the water and sewer rate schedule, I guess, and make some adjustments to that in the hopes that I'd like to have it done so it's warned and in place prior to July 1, before tax and sewer bills go out. So like, one example might be that, you know, no matter what kind of building you're in, you know, the base rate is 1 EU. That's like the cost, that, the base cost for water being available to you in your business, town, or business residential, whatever it is. So like, there's never any, I don't know, argument about, that's just, everyone's at one, no matter what. And then, you know, the second piece is, it could be, so you could do 1 EU, and then it could be plus what the bond payment is, right? So it could be, you know, that, that's an option of how to do it, or something like that. So everyone is, you know, paying that piece also. So I just think it's important for us to meet, go over that, get that in place, and have it so it can be warned prior to July 1. So that way, it's in place going forward for that, and there aren't any questions about that. I think there's pieces in that, I mean, and we could save this for the committee, but that probably need to just be taken out. I don't think you have to list certain things in the rate schedule. I think you need to list how you're coming to it and like that, but I don't think you have to list what each building is and how we're assessing it in the rate schedule, so. So the question is, would you like to meet, like, on an off, like, on an off Monday to meet and do that? Would you like, do, does everybody want to meet? Do a couple people want to?
I want to be there, yes.
Okay.
And then, I was just going to say, that's, you know, that's just a fee schedule. The algorithm where we come up with the numbers, that should be in the ordinance. So the ordinance is going to be a whole different.
Right, but we can change the fee schedule and then work on the ordinance.
Yeah, and I agree with you. Everybody should be charged at least one unit, whatever it is.
Right, yeah.
You know, there shouldn't be.
Yeah.
It's available and.
So, so that's a piece that we can work, create, and clean up the fee schedule, and then working on the ordinance. I mean, I think our ordinances, we need to take them piece by piece and go through and clean them up, and, you know, because they haven't had anything done to them for a while.
Yeah, it's very vague anyway, it doesn't really say much about the rates.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm happy if you want to meet, like, like, if we wanted to meet next Monday at 6 o'clock and just go over that.
I'm good with it, because when you just have the one item, you can focus on it.
Yeah, that, that's all it would be, is just that. Talking about that.
Yeah, I can be there as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
All right, so we'll just warn that as a meeting, just for that, next Monday at 6 o'clock. Great. Yeah, and I, I don't think it'll probably take more than one meeting. I mean, once we get it together, it's really just making some changes, cleaning the language up, and then warning it. All right. Anything else for Board of Water? All right, moving out at 6:27 into the Board of Sewer, Sewer Commissioners.
Motion to make that move.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Judy?
So I filed a grant application for the wastewater facility plant. I got an email this, this week, I got an email, I think it was last Thursday, from Welch's office and Sanders office, talking about congressionally directed spending requests. And one of the items that they would cover are wastewater treatment facilities upgrades. So, um, it had to be in by today, so they gave me a full, like, you know, five days to do it. So, I, they said it was a simple application, and once I did the application and submitted it, all of a sudden it said, oh, by the way, you need, um, letter, you need to describe, I had, I had to describe what the plan was, what the, you know, the asset management plan, what the project looked like, and then I had to get letters of support.
Oh.
And the letters of support had to all come in together, like, I couldn't piecemeal and send them. They wanted them all together, and I'd had to make a P P PDF, so they'd all go up together. So I submitted that, and then I submitted everything on the checklist this morning, so they've got everything. Um, we did get a letter of support from, um, Butch Shaw. We got a letter of support from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Great.
And I did reach out to Dave Weeks too, but he wasn't able to get one to me, so. So I'm hoping the two letters suffice. So, um, I asked for, um, five point five million dollars. Cause I figured the sky's the limit. And, um, I looked at projects in previous that anybody who did a wastewater, um, project, um, got seven million dollars, so they were getting, I think because of the infrastructure being so costly, that I think, you know, I figured it wouldn't hurt to ask for more, so I'm hoping something comes our way at least, just to help with that cost.
That's a good figure.
Anything better than nothing. All right, anything else for sewer?
I don't think so.
Okay, a motion to move out of sewer into the regular select board meeting.
So, second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, departmental reports. You had the Sheriff's Department report?
Yeah, and if you notice, the, the very last page is different. When I went in to do this, for some reason, um, I put in the dates, like, March twenty-second through April, or went up the cutoff before this meeting. And it printed up one, two dates only. And so I emailed him and said, there's nothing out here, and why isn't it there? So he actually printed it and sent it to me, so I don't know why it wasn't in the system, if it wasn't logged into their system, that, you know, the SCAR reported.
Yeah.
But he sent it along to me, so, so that's why, I wonder why it looks different.
It was nice to see that they find some people.
I was gonna say, the last few ones, the fines, I, this one's eleven thirty-six.
Yeah, that's, it is good.
Yeah, I saw they were up the other day, so. Okay. Uh, Town Manager's Report.
Okay, and the reason I didn't include this is cause it's really hard for me to do the manager's report in your packets, because usually I'm trying to compile things, and a lot of things happen in between by the time you get your packet and tonight's meeting. So I just figure it's easier for me to just kinda keep track and just report out to you when you come to the meeting, so. So, um, the mower was delivered to the town garage, our beautiful riding mower, so just seeing now, it's really nice. Guys are excited, so, um, I did request dumpsters from Casella. I actually called once and talked to someone, and no one ever got back to me. I emailed them, and still no one's gotten back to me. So I'm gonna try to reach them again tomorrow, and, um, we're requesting three, uh, thirty-yard dumpsters. Two for garbage and one for recyclables for dump day, so.
That's normal, typical?
The amount?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, one year we had more, but I think they did a cleanup at the dump from debris that was left there from the year before, so we ended up with more dumpsters and stuff, but, um, we've had to go back and get an extra dumpster. But I think now because we have a, we've limited it to a free and a twenty dollar, and that's it, no more, because people are just coming down, coming down, coming down. So I think we should be good with that, so. Judy, I may have a number for you for the, um, West Rutland facility, a direct number. Oh, really? Yeah. Oh, okay. I'll send it to you. All right. If not, I'm calling Hubbard. All right, um, okay, we mentioned green up day bags, they're received. Um, let's see. We notified GPI of the award for the South Street sidewalk to, um, Richard Reed. And they set up an account for me to receive all the documents electronically in exchange between all the engineer firms. Uh, Parks and Rec held an Easter egg hunt and pancake breakfast on March thirtieth, and there was a really good turnout. Their next meeting is April seventeenth, if anyone is interested. So, but they had a good turnout. I put some pictures on the web of the, uh, the breakfast and everything. Luckily, that weather was a little bit better than the weekend before. Um, I put mowing in the cemetery, just cause I think it's a discussion we need to have about, um, if we need to go out to bid. Cause I don't know when the last contract was done. The last one I saw was ending twenty twenty-two, I believe, and I can't find anything after that. So I don't know if it was just constantly maintained by the same person, and we just kept it going. But I gotta check into that to see if they had a contract, and if not, do we wanna go out to bid to see if we get any different pricing?
Uh, I mean, I think it'd probably be the responsible thing just to go out to bid.
Right.
So.
Right. I just do, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a contract going through twenty twenty-four, you know?
Yeah.
So, but I can't, I couldn't find anything, hard copy, electronic, nothing, so.
Okay.
So I'll reach out and see about that. Um, so the response letter to Zion was mailed by the attorney on March twenty-eighth. Um, an updated invoice was sent April fourth, and I sent, I added that information on your table tonight, just so you could review it and see what was sent. So, um, we'll be in touch. Um, and then I also shared with you the article that was in the paper after the fact. They had reached out to me prior, probably the same day, if not the day before, the letter from the commissioners, you know, referencing what you guys agreed on. They called me and wanted to talk to me, and I told them I really couldn't say anything because they hadn't received the response yet. So it, uh, most of the detail in there, I'm guessing, is from them in their letter that they shared with the Caledonia.
Yeah.
Record, so.
Yeah, there's a little fiction in there, so.
Any questions on that?
No.
Um, I ordered three sugar maple trees for the park, um, that was from our yard. So our yard had gotten a Mortimer Proctor grant for three trees over there, but they were never ordered last year, and it got to be too late. So we ordered them this year, um, from Prodigos. So I asked if they could be put in, in May, at whatever is convenient, or the earliest time they feel they could be put in, so. So that would be nice, add some shade.
Yeah.
In a few years.
Yeah, cause originally I had, there was a dozen that we had put along.
Yeah.
Yeah, these aren't gonna be, there, certain ones, she told me, if you have a sugar maple, sugar maples are har- aren't as hardy as the, um, red maples, um, so you gotta be careful not to put them close to the road where the plow and salt gets on.
Yeah, I don't think that was the problem. I think they got whipped.
Plan on having them close to the sidewalk even, so.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
So hopefully it'll be good.
Yeah.
Um, so submitted grant documents that I referenced before, I did that today, finished that off, so hopefully everything's okay, and keep your fingers crossed. Um, I also sent you a letter, um, from a resident, um, and remain anonymous, um, regarding an ordinance regarding plowing and idling vehicles. And I explained that, you know, we don't really have much jurisdiction over a private company. Um, you know, if we hired somebody to contract and do work in the town, like plowing and stuff, then we would, you know, have control over that. Um, but being a private business, you know, I was gonna reach out to her anyway and just see how the dynamics of that works. Um, and I know when, when people get contracted out for plumbing, they have, like, say, ten, twenty, so they start, and when the snowstorm continues, like, the ones we've had the last couple times.
Yeah.
They can't plow and then call it a night. They have to go back and plow again, you know, and trust to keep everybody up, so. You know, I understand it can be annoyance with lights and the beeping of the trucks and stuff, but, um, I said I would bring it before the board. If they wanted to do anything or address it in any way, then I wanted to share that with you, so.
Well, Judy, she's talking about somebody other than our town.
Yes.
Trucks. Yes, somebody, somebody was contracted by.
By the private contractor.
Yeah. Or gas, yeah.
Well, why don't we, Lisa talked about, we, we need to look at, both of you talked about, looking over all our ordinances and updating them. Maybe we could address it at that time and see if we could come up with something that would.
Well, you can't probably control.
I mean, I know, like.
Separate company.
Yeah, but I know, like, in the city, they have, like, they don't allow workers to, like, when they hire to trim our trees or some, the trees there, they couldn't start before six AM.
Right.
And go till whatever, nine, nine p.m., something like that.
Plowing's a little different, yeah.
But plowing's different, and again, it's not our property.
Yeah. And, and maybe that's what you kind of address in the ordinance, that, you know, that you don't address it. Well, yeah, I mean, and it, it's a, it's a business that people are trying to get plowed out, so. You, you can operate a business that, you know, can have emergencies.
My question is, why, I mean, this person.
Didn't go to the business owner?
Well, no. No, they did.
Oh, they did go, oh.
Did.
Yeah.
But that person has resided where they do for years and years.
Yeah.
And this business has resided there as well, so I don't understand.
Yeah.
Why all of a sudden there's an issue?
I don't know, different guy plowing, actually.
Yeah, I have no idea.
And as far as, like, you know, the emissions and idling, and like, that's nothing, you know, I knew, I know once there was a, a.
You're not supposed to.
That was, yeah, you're not supposed to idle your car.
That's a state law.
Yeah, but, you know.
Once again, that's not us, though, monitoring that.
Right.
I'd like to see them be good neighbors and resolve disputes themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Try and work up with some compromise. You know, the business has gotta be cleared so they can get their trucks out.
Yeah.
Right.
Get the people in and.
And, and I think just the last few storms we've had have been messy and a lot, so it may.
And all hours of the year.
So, I mean, maybe that's part of it, it just seems like it was very, it could appear intrusive, because, I mean, they really had to, even the roads, the guys had to be on top of it. I mean, we were getting lots of it, so. The upside is, hopefully we're getting no more snow, so that, that part of it can be kinda pushed to the side. Um.
Okay, then I will let her know.
But, but you can let her know that we're gonna be reviewing, you know, all of our ordinances, and, you know, um, yeah, I would just say we're reviewing ordinances. I think, I think that's the responsible response. Yeah.
If you've got a, an emergency, somebody's out of heat, they're on gas, and they've gotta be able to get a, a truck
Yeah.
Out to their house to.
Yeah.
I just ask one question, Judy, on the, the tractor. You know, are we gonna use the same auction house to sell it? And if we are, can we put it on Facebook or on the webpage, so, you know, if there are residents that wanna purchase on it?
On the webpage, when we, we, we put the auction site on the webpage.
Okay, so they'll be well aware of that.
Last time it was on the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
And just so you know.
Oh.
Um, they're gonna use it, like, when the, this mowing season comes, they're gonna use the old one first, because it is old. And at that time of year, when the spring is, you have all the rocks, the debris and everything all over. They don't wanna use the new ones on their first cleanup, cause it's just gonna ruin the blades, whereas this one, they can use to kinda start their cleanup and stuff.
Makes sense. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
They're always thinking.
Keeping the cattle up. All right.
Uh, let's see, Beaver Pond is now open for the season. Um, again, they're meeting on the sixteenth, the gate is open. Um, I don't know your feeling, but I want it opened all the time. Um, I don't want it locked at night. Um, and someone locked it the other night, I don't know who, but, um, I just feel like it's the season, it, it's gonna be, I think it should be open.
Yeah, I, I think it, I think it should be open, I mean, it, I don't see, I mean, if you wanna go down there, that gate isn't really keeping you out. I mean, all I'm, if I wanted to go down there, what am I gonna do, just park on the street and go down there, so.
Exactly.
I'm not really sure what it's.
Right.
What it's doing, other than maybe creating more of a ha- mess there, kinda on the corner.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And I think, I mean, if there was, like, somebody, like, living in a car down there, like there was before, or if there was, like, something going on for a period of time, then we'd contact the sheriff, and then, then we'd monitor it. But if it's just open now, and people are going down at night, you know, and leaving, it's like.
Yeah, I think, I think it's open, it's open. I mean, it's like, that's the way most places are. Once they're open, they're open, right? Yeah.
Yeah, unless there's a problem that comes up.
Right, right. And I'll bring this up at the meeting, but I, I also want, I'd like to see less there instead of more. Um, I'd like to have, like, you know.
Have it cleaned up.
Five grills, five tables, and that's it.
Yeah.
Not a drop off for other chairs and tables that nobody else wants, and then, cause I feel that just adds that more, then there's more to destroy, there's more to take, there's more to make it, and I just feel it kind of lessens the.
The atmosphere, the whole.
Beauty of, of the pond, so.
Yeah, kinda keep it as natural as possible, while having that, you know, rustic ability, just to enjoy it there.
I mean, we don't have all that kinda stuff in the park. Park looks very nice.
Right, yeah.
But now that they're a committee, I would like them to have the opportunity to tell us why they may want it locked, you know, before I would try and make a decision.
Yeah, right, they can, but.
Well, they can say that, but there, I mean, if we decide that it's going to be unlocked.
Yes, right, right. But still, I'd like to know, you know, why is it that, that somebody may be locking it, you know, rather than leaving it open?
Yeah, well, I think that's what they did last year.
Yeah, they start, they, it was open, and then they started having some.
Somebody locking it every night at nine o'clock, so.
What was the, uh, purpose of the gate?
I think keep people from driving down there.
I, I, well, I think, like, in, you know, more inclement weather, so people don't drive down in there, maybe it gets stuck, cause the guys usually don't plow it out.
Right, yeah, I understood the gate on the end, end of that, anyway.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know.
I mean, there must've been a reason to, at some point, I think a gate was needed, but.
I don't know.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
It just seems like when areas like that open, like, in the spring or whatever, till, you know, whatever. Usually you open, let's say, April first to, I don't know, October fifteenth.
Right.
That that's what it is, like, that it's open. It's not like.
Right.
You know?
But there was a day the practice swimming pool never had a fence around it. It was open any time of the day.
Yeah.
That's really good old days.
Yeah. Yes. But now, I know, there's a fence, so.
Yeah, cause we used to go swimming in a club.
Yeah.
All right, well, I will bench it to them.
All right. And I guess if they, if they have, uh, you know, when you meet with them, if they have particular reason or strong feelings, then they could come to the next meeting and, and share.
And I told them that, you know, that they can have ideas, come to the select board.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Will they meet, uh, next Tuesday? Tuesday, right, next Tuesday?
Uh, the sixteenth, yeah. Okay, uh, let's see, Planning Commission meets this Thursday. Um, delinquent agreements I talked to you about. Um, April twenty-fourth, the state is coming down to do inspections of our dams. So they kinda put us on the fast track, cause I called them and said we are being insured. And, you know, everything kinda fell to the wayside when you guys did a report, what, three years ago, was it?
Yeah.
And, um, nothing was done after that, so, um, I said we'd really like you to come down and kinda go over it with us, and what we need to do, and what can be done, so. So they're coming down April twenty-fourth to look at all the dams, so.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, Joe Peterson, our forester, is gonna try to visit the timber lot in Florence this week. He said the last couple weeks with the snowfalls and stuff, and the rain, so he's gonna try to get out there, and I said I really, really want timber cut this year. And he said he's pretty certain that he can get timber cut out of there this year, so.
Yeah, there's no rea- I mean, he should be able to go in and mark it now.
Right.
So.
Well, I think he's gonna walk, walk it to see what's in there too, so.
Yeah, um, have the, have, has that lot been, have the corners of that ever been marked of that lot?
Um, I don't know, part of it, I think, bleeds over into Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
There's part in Pittsburgh. But I think so, cause there's been timber, there's already, he said, like, a, um, a, a landing that's been there before, so he said that obviously people have harvested it.
Yeah, I think part of it is in Chittenden.
Really?
Yeah, because don't we pay taxes?
Oh, no, I mean.
No, no.
About the Florence property, though.
Yeah, up off Florence.
Yeah, cause we won't be able to harvest Chittenden this year, just cause they've gotta go in it.
Yeah. So it might be interesting, once he goes through, if he just tells us if there's, you know, you know, hard, soft.
Yeah, he said there's some pretty good, he thinks there's a variety in there.
If they're selling, um, do they sell the chips still, and then?
Whatever they do, they go in, actually, he said whoever we contract with would actually go in and actually take. It's not like we'd hire a logger, they go in, then we hire a contract, you know, whoever goes in and cuts, takes it, or something like that. I think that's how.
Yeah, so he's gonna go in and mark, and then we're gonna bid for a logger.
Yeah.
But my question is, um, is that part of the bid, chips, or is it just logging? And then, my other question would be, what is their, um, philosophy on regeneration? Like, do they cut the tops and drop them? So, cause like, some.
Right, it depends on, I think, what's in there, as, as far as trees, cause I know, like, up at Chittenden, there's a lot of the growth like that, that they have to cut, you know, the high tops to give the sun into the lower ones.
Yeah.
But over here, I don't know if it's the same, and I, I don't, he didn't say anything about chipping. I think what he's doing even, in fact, as far as the bid process, he goes through subcontractors, and the subcontractors do everything. And he said it's really hard to get, like, loggers in time, and even subcontractors now, he said the whole dynamic's changed since COVID. Um, people actually going in and being hired to do logging and stuff.
So he's gonna go in and market, and then he's gonna subcontract it to somebody who's gonna hire a logger?
Or the subcontractor would actually go in and log it.
Yeah, I mean, but someone's gonna bid, we're gonna do a.
Yeah, they'll do bids, they'll put in bids, yeah.
Okay.
But he said in the meeting one time that many of the bidders are, uh, logging, or, uh, mill, lumber companies. They purchase, and then they hire the logger to go and log it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of loggers, though, around here still that are logging.
Yes, but he just says it just, it's, opens up the field when it's opened up to the mills, the lumber mills, and the loggers, and.
Yeah.
It just.
Well, it depends on what the wood is too, if it's hard.
Yes, definitely.
Depends on what that is, so. Okay, it would just be interesting to know, once he's marked, um, what that is. And then, with respect to the, um, water agreement, can you just send that out to us for, um, information only? Once you have that, just to read over before it's.
You mean the, the agreement for delinquent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to send out, just, just to read.
Just a, a blank one?
Yeah, just for information, just to see what the information is that's on that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anything else? Alright, anything else?
Just seeing if anybody had anything to say.
Alright, oh yeah, Phil and Charlotte, anything? Alright, and a motion would be in order to adjourn at six fifty-one.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned.